Thank you for those two extra minutes. Let's go ahead and come back to this meeting and move on to item 6.8, 10:00 a.m. Consideration of Presentation on the California Tribal TANF Partnership. Please come on up to the seats. Would you like to sit in the seats?
Oh, no, thank you. I talk better standing up, so in the seats I-
You do what's comfortable for you.
-it kind of distracts me, so I'm like, I want to stand up and talk because then I talk better. So, anyway, my name is Yolanda Lukey and I'm the current Executive Director for California Tribal TANF Partnership. And with me today, I have brought Rosalia Lopez. She's the Executive Administrative Assistant for our organization. And Sonia Horn, who is our, pardon me, our Lake County, our Lake Office Site Manager, who is our, she's well versed in our regulations policies. So if you do have any questions about, you know, eligibility or our processes, she is here to answer those questions for you. I wanted to start off with thanking you for giving us the opportunity to come and do a presentation for you so that we could introduce our program to the Lake County Board of Supervisors. So thank you so much for this opportunity. We are hoping that this presentation will provide, start that open dialogue not only between us and the Department of Social Services. I really feel that we can work better as, for our community, if we have that open dialogue with the Lake County Social Services. So again, thank you for this opportunity. So we are a 20-year program. We were established in July of 2003. We just celebrated our 20th anniversary last July. We are a consortium of tribal governments and we have come together, currently we have 15 partners, but we also provide services to non, to members, tribal members, who are not part of our partnership. It is part of our agreements that we can administer, we can service non-affiliated tribal members. So, and I don't think a lot of people know that we do that. Our lead tribal government is Robinson Ranteria, so we, they govern our program. They help us make decisions on policy, procedure, budgeting, and so forth. We, CTTP creates diverse programs that are geared toward our tribal partners in their specific areas that they live in. We take into consideration their circumstances, their unique circumstances, their experience, their opportunities, and their cultures. Because every tribe is different and we want to make sure that we honor their, their culture and their history. We focus on a broad goal of self-sufficiency for our participants, not just the goal of employment. We look at creating a supportive environment that helps them succeed, not only the parents, but the families, that, the whole entire family that comes into our, our program. Our organization is considered one of the largest organizations, tribal TANF programs in the United States. We cover 18, we have 18 office sites, in 18 separate counties. So we are in multiple counties and we work with, we need to communicate with all those counties on behalf of our participants. So what makes up our program is our tribal partners. And without them, our program would not exist. We work with 15 partner tribes, but that does not include the unaffiliated, which we have multiple tribes that are not our partners yet, but we're trying to bring them on. We have Pitt River up in Burnie and Ione, and then we are working with three new tribes over in Mendocino County. And what that does is, that helps our program become stronger so that we can do more support for our participants. Like I said, we have 14 tribal partners. Our vision, communities of culturally rooted, self-sufficient native families. So that is our vision, to celebrate native families and to help them appreciate and celebrate who they are through our program. We empower native families to self-sufficiency through a path of tribal cultures, education, wellness, and employment. Those are our goals. Not just finding jobs for parents, but to also help them, help them become self-sufficient through the celebration of their native culture, celebrate, celebrate their goals to achieve self-sufficiency, and to help them in their own personal wellness. Our four TANF purposes, we provide assistance to needy families so that children may be cared for in their own homes. That is our primary goal. We reduce the dependency of needy parents by promoting job prep, work, and marriage. We prevent and reduce out-of-woodluck pregnancies through education and helping our families make, help them learn how to make good decisions. And encourage the formation of, formation and maintenance of two-parent families. So we really encourage our families to stay together. So the difference between CalWorks and Tribal TANF. So we strengthen families by, by celebrating their cultural heritage. And that is one of the things that I see the difference between county and Tribal TANF. We celebrate our culture, our heritage, and we encourage the learnings of our traditions, our language, our stories, whatever, whatever our, our partners and our participants need, we encourage that. We have smaller caseloads, so we focus more on our participants. We help, we develop a relationship with them, and we not only look at them as a case number, we, well, we don't look at them as a case number. We look at them as part of our family. And that's how we celebrate our Tribal TANF program. We bring them in and the first thing is, we develop, our caseworkers develop the relationship with the participants so that we can, so they can feel comfortable telling us what they need and how we're going to work together to achieve those goals for them, with them. We do have drug testing and home visiting, and that is part of our program. And so when a participant chooses to come to our program, that is part of the process that they will be, they will have to go through the drug testing, they will have home visits. So what does this mean for our participants? If they do test positive, we don't, we don't deny them, we don't discontinue them. We set up a process to help them become clean and sober. We go through by helping them become clean. We set up the supports for them, the referrals. We have our, our counselor talk with them to develop a plan, and then we work with them. Now, I'm not saying that we don't discontinue at some point if they still come up testing positive, but we do try to engage with them and try to help them through their, their substance abuses so that they can become self-sufficient. Home visits, we do safety checks. So we're looking to make sure that they have appropriate, the fire detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, bedding for the kids, a bed for the kids. And I know our county, I know that counties cannot do that, but we can. If a child is sleeping on the floor, guess what? We can buy them a bed so they don't have to sleep on the floor. We make sure that there's baby-proof gates. Whatever the house needs to make sure that they're safe, that's what we provide to them. That's what the home visits, visits are for. It's to help that family feel safe in their own home. So what the, how we work with the counties, we have, our program is cash assistance, and it is countable in the CalFresh program. It also means that the counties have to administer the Medi-Cal programs before us because we don't have that ability. Basically, our cash assistance makes our participants automatically eligible for Medi-Cal because it is a cash-linked program. As far as CalFresh goes, depending on the family size and the income that we provide and other incomes that the household may have, they may be eligible for CalFresh, they may not. It's all up to the counties to determine that based on the federal poverty levels that the county uses in their eligibility determinations. Native American families have the choice between cash aid, between CalWorks with the county, and Tribal TANF where it's available. That's why it's so important that we are in 18 different counties. So there are 18 counties out there that has a Tribal TANF program that tribal members can participate in. And so we really try to get the information out there to the communities so that they can make that informed choice between CalWorks and Tribal TANF. So this is the eligibility for needy families, and the next slide's going to be eligibility on non-needy families because we hope, we help both. And it comes down to, they have to meet income guidelines, just like they would for cash aid, for CalWorks, I apologize. They have to be a resident in a CTTP service area, have a child under 18, the child, a child in the home must be native. There has to be that linkage to a tribe. And the adults must not have exceeded their 60-month time limit. So we do have time limits for our needy parents, but not for our non-needy, needy relatives. And again, for non-needy's, it's basically the same criteria that we, they meet income guidelines, care for a related native child, so they must be related to that child, and then a resident of the CTTP service area, child's under 18 and has that, that native So the services that we provide, we not only provide cash assistance, we also do supportive services, childcare, transportation, career development, youth services. Some of the additional services that we provide, culturally specific and relevant classes and programs for our participants. We also, we also have members from the tribal partner communities come in also. And it doesn't matter if their members are not, if they are native and apart, if, if they're not participating in receiving cash assistance from us, they can still participate in our workshops. It's okay. Because we, we consider our native partners, our tribal partners, our family. And so when we have any workshops for whatever, and we're going to go through workshops later in a minute, we allow for those individuals, those natives who are not participants, to participate in our workshops. It just makes it a better community organization. So we not only support our participants, but we support our tribal partners. So some of the programs that we're really proud of is our WEX program. This is our work-eligible program, and adults go through this program and we get them, you know, lined up with jobs for internships, or we figure out what they need to improve their employability. We go through career counseling, career assessments, helping them write resumes. We help them with life skills also. The other really important one is our youth employment program. So we actually go out to our communities and see if there's anybody willing to have a youth come in and work for them, and then we pay. We pay for those, those wages. So we help establish that, that relationship with the communities, and we also help our, our youth learn how to do, how to be, how to work at a job, you know, showing up on time, dressing appropriately, doing the job that they're, they're being paid for. And these are great skills that they are developing through our program. We also provide high school education assistance, vocational, and college for, for our, for our adults, and we're looking to expand those services. So one of the, one of the things I'm most proud of in our organization is how much we help our youth. Our youth services, we have workshops on teen pregnancy, cultural awareness, fire safety, water safety, good hygiene, dentists. These are all great workshops that we celebrate our kids and we are teaching them some good life skills. We also have, we have the ability to support them in their extracurricular activities. From January, every calendar year, every child, every participant child receives $500 that they can spend on driving school, on sports, on cheerleading, on any extracurricular activity that they want to do. We support that. So they receive that, they're eligible for that $500. Now, I'm not saying they all use all of it, but if they want to go to a camp, we can support that. If they, and that's just one, one aspect of a, of the services we provide to our children. They also receive school clothing allowances, they receive seasonal, seasonal clothing allowances, and they receive incentives for good grades. So we are able to provide, you know, if a child is receiving A's, we give them a gift card after the, at the end of the semester with money on it, and they can go out and buy stuff that they want to, that they want. And not a lot of programs can do that for their children. And when I say that we include the, the wellness of the family, we truly do mean that. We not only support the parents in their self-sufficiency goals, but we support the children in encouraging better grades, encouraging work ethic, and making good decisions. So I really, truly value the youth services in our program. The cultural activities is a, is a cornerstone. It's a fundamental, fundamental process that we value in our organization. We are trying, we are working on bringing back our languages, our culture, our stories, and we do that in our program. We, we celebrate that in our program. And so when our people are proud of who they are and can see, see and feel how wonderful they are, they start to be successful and less needy. Because they're going out into the world to become educated and to bring that back to their tribes. And so part of our values in our organization is to celebrate our native cultures, to bring back those languages that we've lost, to bring back those stories. And so to us, this is one of the, one of the key concepts of our organization, a fundamental value that we celebrate in our organization. We hold specialized workshops for parenting, healthy relationships, communication in the families, recovery groups, because it's important if we're going to test, that we have those groups available to our participants so that they can recover and become clean and support their family. We do talking circles to, to ensure that there is that support group for our parents and for our grandparents, for those non-needy relatives that have to, that are taking on children and teaching them and taking care of them. They need those talking circles so that they can help, so that they have that support and help, so that they can be good role models to their dependents. We also do a lot of community outreach. In our Del Norte, our Crescent City office, they actually go out to the community and every year they have food boxes that they, and they, they apply for a grant, they receive about $1,000, and then they go out into, to the different stores and whatnot in the community and put gift food boxes together. I was, I had the opportunity to go up to the Crescent City office and help hand out these boxes, and these boxes were a good 150 pounds. They got a, you know, 15-pound turkey, a ham, a gallon of milk, dozen of, dozen eggs, cheese, cookies, so that they can decorate cookies with their families, and then everything they would need to make that holiday dinner. And this is what I mean by we go out into the communities, because it's not just about our participants, but it's also establishing that relationship to those, in those communities that we work in, and this is the product. They, they help us with our families and provide something that's so special and so nice that, you know, I want to make sure that all of our sites are trying to do this with our participants, because our participants just, they, they were really grateful for what we were able to provide to them with the community support. So we go out and we, we work with the communities, we try to engage with Department of Social Services to help our participants receive snap, receive CalFresh, or to make sure that their Medi-Cal's running correctly, whatever they need, we're there to support them. We go and sit with them during school meetings about their kids. That's what we're there to do, not only just to, you know, tell them what they need to do, but to, to support them in their goals in becoming self-sufficient. So we're a partner with them. We're not a dictator to them. We, when we mean participant, they are participating in the road to becoming self-sufficient, and we're there to partner with them. So these are some of the organizations that we work with. Of course, we have a lot more because we're in 18 different counties. So that's my presentation of California Tribal TANF today. I hope this provides information to all of you about our program and about who we are and what we do. Because it's so important that we keep this program going not only for our participants, but for our tribal people, because we're more than just a cash assistance check. We are also a support for them, a safe place for them, someone that's going to take them where, you know, if they need to go to, the kids, the kids alone, all the support that we, we provide to them. So, do you have any questions, any comments?
Thank you so much for your presentation today. It looks like we have a comment or question from Supervisor Green.
I don't have a question. I'm, I'm just really thankful that you came and did this presentation and reached out to us. I didn't really understand the program. I've heard a lot about it over the years, but this is incredible. And I always wanted to know where we can support, cross-support with our tribal nations here in the county. So I just, I have a lot of gratitude for you taking the time today and making this presentation.
Thank you so much. I really felt it was important because I really do, like, I have pamphlets in here I would love to give to you guys, and then if you could hand it over to Social Services. So I would like to start putting our information into their lobbies so that there is that communication between our, our organization and the Department of Social Services, because we really do work hand-in-hand to, for our participants to have a better life. So I, I really feel strongly that we need to start making those connections in this community.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you also for the presentation. Lot to unpack there, and I have a lot of questions. I have about a dozen questions, so I'm not going to ask them now. I'm going to ask for permission, hopefully, to reach out to you later and-
Of course.
...answer some of those. Are you up at Robinson?
Oh, no, we have an office at 991 Parallel Drive.
Oh, here in town.
Joanna has my email address, so you are more than welcome to just send me all your questions and I can go through them and answer them, because I would prefer that, because I want to give you correct information and not information off the top of my head.
Right. And just as a follow-up, I enjoyed the, the slide deck. I see it wasn't posted with the agenda, so I'm hoping there'll be board consensus that we could post that slide deck after today's meeting, just so if people do see this and they can refer to the agenda for that background PowerPoint. And also, because I didn't see it on the PowerPoint, if you just wanted to highlight a, a phone number of contact or a website that people wanted to follow up questions, where would, where would they best find that information?
So the, there is the website that is posted on the very front page of that-
Slide deck.
Slide deck.
Okay.
And it's, I don't know it off the top of my head, but-
CT.
CTP. CTP.net.
Excellent.
And that's our website. And that has, like, our history, our vision, it has all the workshops that we provide. So it has, it has a career section because we're always looking for new hires, so, and we, of course, hire across 18 counties, so we have positions all over the place.
Okay. And one question, one question-
Of course, of course.
...and it's a softball I didn't quite get. So maybe you get funding through a state compact and you're kind of equivalent to CalWorks, but just if you have off the top of your head, what's your annual budget across the 18 counties that you're serving?
Oh, you know, I don't have that information. We do receive federal and state funding. We're part of the, the state, we're part of the federal block grant that is given for the, the cash assistance program. So we take a, like, a percentage of what the state is giving.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you again. Quick questions for you. I feel like you came here with a, a purpose to enhance the relationship, and just kind of want to ask you, what are you looking for? Do you have an idea of what you would like to see happen that may not be happening so that as a board, that's something that we can consider and provide guidance to our, our departments in order to enhance that relationship? What, do you have a specific ask?
Well, what I'm looking for is to start some communication between, like, for example, the Welfare to Work program, and, you know, working with them to collaborate on better servicing our native community. That's really what I want to do. I want to, I want to work with Department of Social Services so that they can learn about our culture and how we feel when we go into an office. I came from Mendocino County. I worked with Mendocino County for 29 years, so I know what an office setting looks like when you walk into an office for a county, or a Department of Social Services county. It's very sterile, not very welcoming, and depending on a good day or a bad day, you might get somebody that is really not helpful. And so what I would like to do is engage with Department of Social Services and Welfare to Work so that they can know how to communicate with our native communities, whether it's coming and doing a workshop with them. You know, we can provide more workshops with the county- You know, we can provide more workshops with the county, you know, to help educate staff on how natives are, should be, how natives will respond to how they treat them, you know. And, you know, if you're going to force somebody to do something, if you're going to force a native to try to do something, they're going to get stubborn on you. And so what we do is we work with them and we encourage them, and then we let them choose their path, and then we support that path. And I think that's the difference. And I want to, I want to work with Welfare to Work and Department of Social Services and start making it easier for our participants to engage with the county. You know, we want to, I want to make sure that their benefits are running smoothly. You know, if they apply for cash at CalFresh, I want, I want to help facilitate that and expedite those benefits to them. You know, I want to make sure if their Medicaid drops, why? You know, what happened there? Our program is automatically cash-linked Medicaid. A worker only needs to update the benefit, update the information, run the system, and have that eligibility updated into the state system. That's all they have to do. So I want to make sure that we're helping with, with any services that our people are having, having concerns or issues with. And I think the more that we engage with the county, they're going to be more open to assisting and helping our people, not just our participants, but all of our, all of our people that are there receiving benefits through the programs administered by the, by the, by Lake County. So, you know, I've been on both sides. I, I understand how, I understand the lack of knowledge in a county setting. And so I would like to change that in a positive manner.
Thank you for that. I, I think that the services you provide and the services that Social Services provide complement one another. I think there's a lot of like people that we are both serving. One of the thoughts that I am having during this whole conversation is CAL-AIM, where there's supposed to be that continuity of services, continuity of care, wondering where TANF fits within the CAL-AIM. I haven't heard in the conversation of CAL-AIM where TANF fits in, wondering if you can provide some information on that.
So CAL-AIM is mostly a state, state-run program, so we're not, we don't really work within the state parameters. That's why it's Tribal TANF. So whatever's happening in CAL-AIM, I would have to research more to find out what, what is going on in that program, to get more fluent in that program, before I could actually make, give you that analysis.
And granted, it's just stating my opinion, even if it's not something that impacts you directly, it feels like it fits within the conversation of being at the same table together to discuss the like people that we are serving together, just so that we don't have people falling through the cracks or in between services. So that's something I'm thinking about. Another thing that I'm thinking about is, I, I don't know what your level of connection is, but I would assume that some of the people you serve may be experiencing homelessness. And we're always looking for bringing in especially tribal perspectives and tribal services to the COC in order to make sure that we connect the full spectrum of the populations in our communities, in ensuring that we're serving them to the best of our capabilities through the COC. And so I'll be reaching out to you about that to see what's possible. And I, I'd love to continue the conversation about CAL-AIM to make sure, because CAL-AIM is also people who end up going into incarceration and coming out. We want to make sure that we know who they are, what services we're supposed to continue providing, not all of a sudden having our jail medical taking something over that we're disconnected.
Right.
And so any way that we can connect the dots together for better care, better continuity, I think is always going to be better. So something I'm going to think about and look into, and I'll reach out.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Supervisor Chair Candle?
You want to cover it very well, thank you very much. Just wanted to emphasize, I know you mentioned this, but I wanted to just repeat it so people understand that are listening or tuning in, that there, CTP does serve out-of-state Native Americans that are federally recognized and, and have, it's not just for the seven local tribes how, you know, tribal health does. So just wanted to make sure people knew that. There are some tribes that have their own TANF. I know that Supervisor Piesk just asked me about Scotts Valley, they have their own Tribal TANF. And so they serve a specific entity or a specific tribe that has agreed with them. So tribes can elect to go with any group that they want or their own. So that's why you'll see some of the tribes that aren't a part of us, because they decide to either, they elect to go with another Tribal TANF, their own, or they're, they're, they're satisfied with the county services as well. And folks that are in the county don't have to just be served by California Tribal TANF. They could elect to go to county services as well. And so actually, that's all I had, so, yeah.
Just wanted to emphasize that. I know you mentioned it, but I wanted to make sure it was-
It didn't get lost in the, all the other information I threw at everybody?
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming today and giving the report. Obviously, TANF has been in the county since 2003. You've seen Middletown Ranchery, it's named up there. We coordinate, we're a participant with you guys, so we greatly appreciate that work being done. It is hard for our, our native community to go to social services or other things. They do that, but I think that coordination conversation always needs to be enhanced. We're always educating on, we're running these same programs, we should do it together and communicate. I think, I see Department of Social Services there, Kristi, behind you's got some comments, but, you know, I think we're, we're always moving in that right direction. Presentations like this, from a board standpoint, I think really brings you to the community light, and we'll continue to do that. I want to just talk about some of the real benefits, you know, the non-needy cash assistance that helps our tribal members. You know, in our tribal communities, our most important thing is keeping our tribal children in the tribe. And that means with the aunt, uncle, a cousin, somewhere there. So sometimes you run into those boundaries where, how do you take care of that family member once you bring them into the home? And the non-needy cash assistance that's provided by Robinson when they started the program is very important. I know for the Middletown Ranchery, it's helped with three community members, three tribal members being able to be kept in families' homes, which is the most important thing, keeping our children in our communities as we grow them up. So very important stuff, but Middletown Ranchery supports Tribal TANF program, not only serves Lake County, but the other 18, and it's always providing opportunities both for tribal and non-tribal employment. I'm glad that the, the main base is here in Lake County and started with Robinson, so I can't thank that tribe enough. So appreciate it. And once again, another education process. Every program that's run here at the county, each tribe with less capacity and opportunities has the same departments. We need roads, education, Department of Social Services, everything that you're running, we're running a government, and everything that can be helped from outside tribal agencies and funding really helps to meet those gaps that the tribes themselves, you know, can't support every tribal member's needs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I want to make sure and give some time to Director Marketan. It looks like she crept up to the front, front seat to make a statement.
I did. And I just wanted to say that was a great presentation. I very much appreciate it. It's, you know, the way that you're able to provide services is different than the county, which it sounds like you know. It's more of a hybrid of social services and the benefits, and very separate within the county structure. I worked in Del Norte for 20 years, so I'm also familiar with Del Norte and working with the tribes there. And so I'm, have not been approached, I've been approached a couple of times in meetings, but not directly. And we are more than happy to sit down, have conversation about any of the things that you talked about today. Would be more than happy to do that, and I'll give you my information.
And I'll give you my card.
Perfect. Sounds like a plan.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Absolutely, please.
I'm Noemi Duhan, I'm the Public Health Officer. Thank you for this wonderful presentation. And I just want to also share with you that the Public Health Department or Division is also a potential partner for you. And to speak about CAL-AIM, it, there's also a program called Path Sighted, where it's funding for community health workers. And so I think there is an opportunity here for partnership absolutely with the Public Health Department, and I'm going to take one of your flyers, and please, I would love to also be in touch.
Excellent, I'll give you my card.
Thank you.
And this- And this was one of the reasons why I wanted to come here, because this is two connections already, you know, and it's just going to be more positive for our program, because with the help of resources in our communities, we will be able to service our people better. And that's what I was really aiming for, to not only bring knowledge to the Board of Supervisors and to Lake County, but also to start making those connections, so that we can expand services to our people.
Workforce Alliance of the North Bay and the WEX program, there may be some correlation there as well, so maybe getting Bruce in touch with her or something like that, yeah?
I'll give Joanna, Joanna my cards that you guys can hand out to.
Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
I, I will add one thing, not going to request that this happens, but obviously you are making contact with both Public Health and Social Services. Based on some of the services you're providing, whether it's recovery or substance abuse, I would say definitely we need to connect you with Behavioral Health as well. I think all, all of those services kind of have overlap, and I want to make sure that we don't miss anything on that.
And bringing our counselor to Behavioral Health, right? You know, it would be a great opportunity to start gearing stuff toward natives, you know, circles, talking circles, support systems, because natives will respond better when they're talking with natives, so.
And I, I just want to follow up with that. We're getting a large, many large settlement amounts each year going forward, for a few years, for the opioid settlement. We're working on that plan right now, so it's going to be critical to have tribal input on that plan with Behavioral Health. And we've also, we gave board direction for all of our departments to connect with our agencies, to do a lot of messaging and education on overdosing and fentanyl. And so that would, with your conversations with Behavioral Health, those two pieces, also it'd be critical to have your input there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up for the public, for any public comment. I do not see any in the Zoom room, and I do not see anybody getting up in this chamber. And so I will bring it back. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Of course.
I, I think from, from all of this, we, we know the saying, it takes a village to raise a child. You've mentioned youth multiple times. Every service, every program, working together and enhancing those relationships is only going to better the outcomes for all our children and all our families. And so I appreciate the work that you are doing, and looking forward to the work we will be doing together.
Well, I feel this is a very positive opportunity, and I look forward to connecting with everybody so that we can better serve our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you.